The Atwater City Council meeting for September 22nd. We're gonna start with an invocation by Chaplain Don Borgwart, led by the, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by City Clerk Corey Billings. So if you please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, we just thank you for the privilege and the honor, Lord God, to invite your presence here. We thank you, Lord, for the city. We thank you for the staff, the City Council, and the mayor, and all those that have desired to serve this city, to help us to grow and to wrestle with the issues as we present this growth to you. Father, we ask for your wisdom tonight. We ask for your discernment. Give us guidance as we go forward on making decisions about the current issues on our agenda tonight. And, Lord God, please give us peace. Give us the opportunity to be open to communication. Be respectful of one another, have grace with one another, and to be open to different dialogues and different conversations. Lord God, give us a, a heart of gratitude for what we have, a heart of respect for each other and what we do, and lead us in this meeting tonight, Lord God. Guide us as we go about your business, in Jesus's name. Amen.
We have two small items here. Do we have any subsequent need items? Oh, the roll call, yeah, that one too.
Ambry's?
Here.
Kale?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Rochester?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, now we have two small little things before we get to the next thing. Do we have any subsequent need items?
No, Mayor, we do not have any subsequent need items.
Okay. Is there any changes to the amen, to the agenda? If not, can we get a motion to approve it as posted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Rochester. Raymond?
Yes.
Ambry's?
Yes.
Kale?
Yeah.
Rochester?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, before we have our supervisor come up and do his monthly report, we are going to have a special presentation. A few meetings ago, we had a, did a proclamation of, well, proclamation, I guess, of appreciation for Mrs. Dobbins. And, but she wasn't able to be here. And so she asked if she could get a picture this evening with the council. And she brought her whole fam, a lot of family and friends, which is fine. And, but I don't want them to have to sit through the whole meeting before we get around to having time to take the picture. So we'll do that first, and then we'll move on with the regular agenda. So if the council will join us down here.
Shift a little bit. Shift. You stay there, because you're center. But we're gonna have to like, some of you might have to come to this side, because we've got a lot on this side, and then less. Councilmember Raymond, can you come on this side, please? Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get going here, again. Our next item is our monthly report by Supervisor McDaniel. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council. It's great to be here before you today. Tomorrow is our final budget for the Merced County. Right now, it is a $1.12 billion budget. As you know, we have our discretionary, plus we have the state and federal mandated portion of the budget, but a final hearing will be tomorrow. The most important thing I wanted to talk to you about is we were able to meet a week before last with both the Department of Transportation and EPA, all federal groups. And we were discussing the Atwater-Merced Expressway and the holdup. I don't know if you guys, we, we were able to get the EPA to accept the modeling that we had proposed for it. And that was on a Tuesday, whenever they okayed it. We were ready to move forward. We're gonna build the project. But by the end of the week, the president had made a declaration to use a different funding or a different modeling purpose. Well, this worked for 49 states. It didn't work for California. We use a different program. The calculus that we use to identify this modeling is completely different. So we met with our, all the congressmen, our full San Joaquin Valley delegation. Everybody is on board. We, the Department of Transportation didn't understand what the holdup was, as well as EPA. So we were able to meet with both departments, bring it together, tell them what happened. And this isn't just bureaucratic folks. We actually had presidential folks who were appointed in these positions to hear our concern. It was, well, for me, it was questionable that both these silos didn't know and hadn't talked about it when we've been talking about this for over a year. And the thing was, we, we came in, we had some resolution, we had some opportunities to make it happen. Like I said, our Valley delegation, the congressmen are gonna sign a letter in support of what we proposed to them. And if we can't get that done in a fast enough manner, they're trying to get a two-year extension to even do the three years. So it just happened in 2010. We used the same modeling projection when they extended it out. So we're looking at, hopefully, we're getting a resolution. They said as, as early as 30 to 60 days before we can start moving dirt. So it's there. We had a robust discussion. I have to say that I haven't been in, I've been in a lot of meetings with these departments, but this one, they were looking for a solution. We had a solution, and it looks like they're gonna move forward with it. Any more questions?
Yeah, I, I have one.
Yes.
Can you explain the Castle Standing Committee, and who's on it, and what it is, and what it's, and what it's supposed to be doing?
Yes, so we do have a Castle Standing Committee, and basically, it's a staff update to the two supervisors that represent Castle. So it's myself and Supervisor Pereira. It's usually where we at in the process of this study being done out there, when we got awarded, so awarded the grants that we had for the airside of the airfield. And just, it, it's just updates, basically, to us.
And it's only the two of you on there?
The two of us are on there.
Okay.
We're the only two on there.
Okay, you're the only two.
And staff updates us.
Is there anybody that Atwater could give a opportunity upon that standing committee so that we could have a correct knowledge of what is happening in and around our back doors?
So the standing committee is open to the public?
So it's either yes or no?
There's really, there's no vote. There's no, it's just, it's literally an update. Usually, whenever they update the Board of Supervisors, and Kalisa would be, you know, as a department head herself, usually do two-by-two-by-ones. So instead of having to do a scheduled-out meeting, they like to put this committee together to update us on what's going on. But we don't meet every month.
You're supposed to meet every month?
Well, they schedule it for every month, but we probably meet, depending on what the updates are, maybe, maybe two months in a row, and then we don't meet for another quarter.
Okay, so it's not really an official meeting. It's you and Lloyd getting together and setting over a cup of coffee and...
With staff and an attorney.
With staff and an attorney?
Yeah.
So is there anybody that you could contact the city, and we make a decision on somebody setting on that, or setting in on that committee, since you're not gonna say, yes, we should be on that committee, and letting us know when that committee is gonna meet, so we can have some of that either?
Absolutely. Yeah, in fact, it's posted at the county. We could get, we could definitely get you the posting. And you could check with us to see if it's gonna happen or not.
Okay.
Like I said, most of the meetings are canceled.
Okay.
If we looked at it, we'd probably meet four to five times in the year. And it's something we just started, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I've, I've given up, when people ask me when things are gonna happen on, by a certain date, like this road, or that road, or this road, or whatever, I've stopped giving them actually definite timeframe from what I've been told by staff and whatnot, because it never comes to fruition. It's, there's always something that folds up. So you say 36, 30 to 60 days to start moving dirt?
Well, I didn't say to start moving dirt, that the modeling process
That's what I wrote down.
be accepted all over again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I just proved my own point.
I mean, I took calculus in high school, and I couldn't sit there and do those calculations.
Okay.
That was a long time ago.
That it?
That's it.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we're going to the consent, consent calendar.
Backward information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If a council member requests separate discussion on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Is there any public comment regarding the consent calendar? Seeing nobody come forward, I'm closing public comment. Are there any items on the consent calendar the council would like to remove for separate discussion and possible action?
Mayor, I'd like item number five set aside, please.
Okay. All right, so we got one through four, then. Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion by Kale, second by Ambry's. Kale?
Yeah.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Ambry's?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item five, which would have been adoption of a resolution opposing California Proposition 50, and directing the City Clerk's office to transmit copies of the resolution to the governor and to the California Secretary of State. Council comments?
So my comments would be that I know that Proposition 50 has generated a lot of discussion and a lot of interest by a lot of different parties, and I respect the, the perspectives. And that being said, I, I, this is not about whether or not I feel Proposition 50 is a good or bad idea. It's about whether or not I feel it's appropriate for us as a city council to take an official position on a statewide ballot measure. I don't believe that it is. I think our role is to focus on city business and to serve the residents of Atwater, not to influence how individual voters would cast their ballots. So for that reason, I'll be voting against this resolution. My decision is not about the merits, again, of Proposition 50 itself, but about my belief that those choices belong with the voters and not with the council influencing those decisions.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
With elected officials, it's our job to look out for the, what's best for the residents. And with Proposition 50, it undermines what voters originally had voted for, which is an independent redistricting commission. And I know this is a political response to what happened in Texas, where the state legislature actually has the right to redistrict when, when, you know, they need to. We don't have that here, because we voted it out. And it sets a bad precedent, and it's a lack of accountability. It might be good for a certain political party right now, but to use a lot of the terms they use, it's bad for democracy later. So I will be in support of this.
Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, if I may, just for the record, this item was requested by a council member to be placed on the agenda. This is not something that originated from staff.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to agree with Brian. It's absolutely a good thing. How we're represented here in, in Atwater, and who we have to go talk to, to get things done at the state level and at congressional level, we need good representation. And we've already had it set up with the Citizens Redistricting Committee. The voters voted twice to approve that whole process. And now the legislature and the governor are trying to undermine that. We need to help protect our rights here for our residents. So I'm in favor of that. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kale, second by Raymond. Kale?
Totally agree, yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rochester?
No.
Ambry's?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, now we're on to the regular calendar. Public hearings. Our public hearing is to waive the first reading by title only and introduce an ordinance approving a zoning ordinance text amendment number 25-09-0100, amending Chapter 17.71, conditional use permit of the Atwater Municipal Code. And the city manager will lead the discussion.
And this item has been reviewed by the Planning Commission. The, the purpose of this item is to update our municipal code as it relates to conditional use permit language in the code. The main change in this is to update the expiration time, timeframe for conditional use permits from six months that they currently are to five years. This would help us match what the city of Merced has in their code, and helps us stay competitive with neighboring city. It also helps us be more business-friendly, and it helps the applicants for these permits have certainty, and, and it helps them have some predictability in the permitting process, so that they know, you know, that they'll have their permit for enough time that they can get the things that they need to do prepared, such as, you know, if they, if they need financing, and they have a problem with the bank, and they have to go back and forth. Some things take time, and, and having a longer expiration date gives them that breathing room so that they can do the work that they need to do. So it's our recommendation, and the, and the Planning Commission's recommendation, that this be approved. And this is the first reading, so this would come back at the next council meeting.
The council have any questions?
I do have some concerns about the, the wording. There's a section 17.71.020, where I believe that the wording is, it's overly legalistic. It's kind of hard for the reader to follow. And so I think it could be simplified a bit for clarity, like a conditional use permit revocable, conditional and/or valid for a term period. It, it just doesn't read very well. And then the second issue that I had was the community development director shall make the determination as to whether the proposed use is a similar or less intensive use. I think that gives too much discretion to one staff member, and I think that should go back to the Planning Commission for them to make that determination as a body. And then I also believe that five years is a long time. I, I agree. I think that it's helpful to extend it, and it shows that we're being more business-friendly. But I'm just concerned about changes in the laws and things like that as, as we're progressing through. And so I, I would think that it would make more sense for maybe the community and economic development director to review it after two years and ensure that there's good faith being made, and potentially look at any changes in the laws that might take place before providing that extension. Those are just my initial thoughts on it.
Sure, there's a few things. First, could you repeat which section that you said, 020?
Yes, the application and fee.
Was it A, B, or C?
I didn't write that on my notes. Let me look.
There are three attachments in, in the agenda packet. One of them is the original version, which I think is the one that has that language that's kind of confusing.
A, where it gets super lengthy.
Yeah, it says, it said, it used to say, conditional use permit revocable, conditional and/or valid for a term period. So that's being stricken out, and it's being clarified to, so it says, "A conditional use permit may be issued for any of the uses or purposes for which..." That, do you, do you see where I'm looking at?
I do, thank you.
Okay, and then the second item I think you brought up was the community development director having that discretion. That's appealable to the Planning Commission, and that's very standard across cities everywhere that, for the sort of thing, to have that ability. And the third thing that you brought up was the, the five-year. So it's, of course, the discretion of the council, how we change this. The idea is that our closest neighbor, the city of Merced, they have a five-year process, and, and so we're flexible. And I'm, I'm happy to go with whatever the council wants, of course, but the reason that I recommended that is to be competitive with our neighbor.
Okay, any other questions? Is there any public comment on this item?
Sean Connor, 1301 Drakely, on the Planning Commission. I would encourage the council to adopt it at five years. We're currently working hard to become more competitive. We're currently getting beat. You can drive around our city, and you can drive around Merced, drive around Turlock, right? So I feel like the concerns are valid, but we could always roll that back, right? Government's really good at rolling stuff back. So like, I would just encourage you guys to seriously consider the five years. Thank you.
Are there any plans on the conditional use permit after a certain time being reevaluated? Or they just, I didn't see that in, in the, in the packet that we got.
Under 17.71.080, it talks about revocation, and it says that, I'll paraphrase, but it says that at any time the Planning Commission can revoke it for non-compliance. So if they're not following their, their use permit, then we can take a look at that. So it's not like a, a kind of a blank check forever. It's more of a, here's, here's your permit, and you have to follow it. But if you don't follow it, then we can revoke it.
All right, Adam?
Hello, Adam Reed. This is something that I've brought up for years, and like, whenever I've met with staff and things like that, that the six months for site plans and conditional use permits. You really can't get through the process and get even close to being able to have a project based on the municipal code requirements to satisfy the conditions of your CUPs and site plans. That being said, five years is a long time. You've got building code cycles that change, and I know whenever I came to the Planning Commission meeting, it was brought up that there was a suspension of the building code, and that's not totally accurate. The governor put some stuff into place for Southern California for the fires, but it doesn't, it, it, for residential, there are some building code things that aren't gonna change, but like, non-residential, the building code cycles are still gonna be in effect. So building code cycles every three years. So there is the potential that it could affect things, just like back in, like, 2015, whenever the state changed their stormwater permits, and everything went into effect, into effect for water treatment and stuff. Everybody rushed to get their site plans and stuff done, so that they wouldn't be affected by it. But building code cycles don't necessarily reflect that. Like, the building code is based on when the, when the code is updated, so. But I, I, I'm in favor of it from the development side. It's great, but like, I mean, there is gonna be some people that come in that submit plans, and they get comments. plans and, uh, they get comments back and, you know, there's things that have changed in Cal Green or something like that where, you know, they're, they're going to say, "Well, I didn't know that. It wasn't on my site plan." You know, "I wasn't told that I needed trash enclosures with, with roofs over them and four-foot awnings over my doors and, you know, five percent slopes for ten feet away from my building and stuff like that because this stuff changes." So.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? I think nobody else come forward. I'm going to close public, public comment. If there were more discussion on this.
I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could maybe massage that language a little bit to allow for some... I, I think that we could, I mean, potentially we're going to have staff confused as to which laws they should be following, right? Or, I mean, what, I guess this is not my area of expertise, obviously, so what, if you submit a permit for building and, you know, four years you start building, are you responsible for the site pan, plans that were approved four years ago? Or if there's a change in the law from three-year, you know, after the three-year mark and there's a change, would staff be accountable to inspect to the new law or would they go with the old?
Uh, I can answer that. So, the, the law that is followed for building codes is separate from, um, from what we're talking about here, but, uh, the time, at the time that you apply for the building permit, that those building permit, that's the code that you'd follow, uh, for your process. That's my understanding. And, and so if we were to change this, uh, you know, lessen it for five years, for instance, um, it, it's kind of, it sits in a different bucket from the building permits. So, so applicants, they first come for a conditional use permit, um, and that's, that's the planning permit. And then later they'll come, once they get that conditional use permit, they'll come back for a building permit and, uh, that's going to be at a different time. Um, it might be a couple of years later and there could be some changes, um, you know, to state code or to the building code, which we don't have a lot of control over, um, because it's like, you know, international building code. So, w- all we have control over is our own municipal code and, and this, this question here. So, uh, things do get restrictive all the time and, and we do see new regulations from, you know, the state or, you know, building code changes all the time or we always have to keep up with that. But it's, uh, I mean, uh, from what I understand, um, from what I've heard, some of these, uh, building codes that are getting updated, for instance, um, like there's, there's new rules with fenestration or, um, insulation, you have to insulate pipes and, uh, it's, it could cost more to develop. But a lot of those things are not handled in the conditional use permit process, which is more about a site plan. It does have certain things, like there could be a little bit overlap. For instance, some years ago, um, and I, I don't, I don't know the exact reference in code, but, um, when you're talking about, um, dumpsters and you have the, the enclosure for the trash enclosure, um, at some, you know, there are some regulations that require a, like a roof of, or some kind of cover over it and that was a new thing and then now, now people needed to do that. So, things evolve over time, but, um, we have to, we adapt the, the best we can to it. And having a, a lengthier time for your conditional use permit to be active, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to come in for a building permit day one or two or three years later, but when you do come in, that's, that's the code that you're going to be hooked into for building code. Sorry if I overexplain that.
So if, for example, we wanted to say five years was too long and maybe three years would might be a better time for that, can we amend this? How's that work here?
Yeah, you can make, uh, any amendments now. We just can't make any amendments, um, between the first and second reading. So, in other words, staff couldn't make any changes and bring that to second reading, but you can make the changes now as long as it's clear in the motion and we can proceed with a second reading at the next meeting with that change.
Well, I'm okay with five years personally, but three years might actually be better.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm, I'm okay with the five years as well, but also, uh, I'm not opposed to Councilmember Rochester's, uh, request. I just, it's not my area of expertise, so the, the smoother language is not something, you know, I can come up with, but I'm not opposed to five years either.
Was there anything besides, um, the year, so you were talking about Councilmember, Councilmember Rochester, you were talking about, um, clarifying some of the language other than the, the five-year question? Is that right? Or is everything on that good?
I was satisfied with the other two. I just, I remain questioning on the, on the five years versus, I think, three years is probably... I, I definitely want to be competitive with our, our neighboring city. Like I don't want to do anything that's going to hinder that by any means, but I also don't want staff to be overly burdened with trying to keep up with, you know, which changes happen or what, you know, what codes they're accountable for inspecting to. And that's what I worry about is just staff being overly burdened with that issue primarily.
John, did you have something?
I, I'm very good with the five years. I'm, I want to make sure that we are just competitive as everybody else.
Just know the ordinance does say that the, the application, the use, the CUP may be extended for up to two years, so just want to make sure that you are aware of that too, if that factors into your, um, deliberation.
And to be clear real quick, it's only for CUPs.
Yes, this is only for CUPs. We do have plans to bring in the future, an update to the municipal code as it relates to site plan approvals, expirations for those.
Okay. Who wants to make a motion?
That's as presented, correct?
Motion by Raymond, second by Kale. Kale?
Yes.
Ambry's?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Could I get clarification on that vote? Was that a vote to have it be accept? As presented? Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Reports and presentations from staff. Item seven, adopting the City of Atwater Public Safety Master Plan. Chief Randall and Chief McKeachin. Probably Chris first.
Sure, I'll start. Um, I think we have a presentation from Dustin Alamo, um, in a PowerPoint, so we'll invite him to the podium here. Um, after his presentation, if there are any questions that he or either of our chiefs can answer, they're at, they're here tonight.
Is that Teams link activated too?
It does, it does work eventually. There we go.
All right. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present the city's, um, Public Safety Master Plan. Uh, tonight we're going to walk through, that works, uh, our process findings, uh, facility options with associated budgets and priorities that can help guide you through the next twenty years of, uh, facilities related to public safety, uh, operations. Um, as mentioned, my name is Dustin Alamo and I'm Vice President of Griffin Structures. Uh, I bring over twenty years of planning experience in public safety facilities across California. I'm also joined by a team member online, I think, uh, Stu Gary from City Gate, who helped provide some of the organizational and, um, staffing evaluations as we developed some of this, uh, master plan activity. So let me, uh, there's me. So we bring robust experience, uh, with public safety facilities across California, uh, from Hisperia Police Department, uh, Buena Park, Test and Fire Stations and most, multiple police and fire projects, um, in Westminster, Visalia, Selma, and beyond. Um, this background gives us a strong benchmark for comparison as we evaluate your facilities. So here's the roadmap for tonight. Um, we'll start with our purpose and process that kind of kicked off the master plan. Um, again, key findings, we'll look at facility options, I'll walk you through, um, each option and how that kind of translates into your facilities, um, implementation priorities, and then, um, how does it benefit your city? So, purpose and process. The master plan was really, uh, kicked off to assess operational and facility needs for both fire and police over the next twenty years. Um, it started off with a data collection process, um, site reviews, interviews with staff, um, gap analysis against industry benchmarks, staffing and space planning, and then finally concept design and budgeting with, uh, related recommendations. So key findings, we'll begin with the fire department. Uh, in short, Station forty-one is outdated. Um, it doesn't have seismic resilience, um, and it needs major upgrades, uh, or replacement. Current response times, they meet minimum requirements, but really leave no margin for error. Growth projections require a third station in northwest Atwater by twenty thirty-two and staffing must eventually double from six to twelve to keep pace with build-out projections. On the PD side, uh, Atwater has a point seven eight officers per one thousand residents, uh, which is far below the California average of two-point-two per a thousand, um, understanding that, you know, those are probably for more urban areas. But at the same time, uh, you know, we've recognized that the facility is undersized, um, it's outdated in a lot of ways, and at the time of survey, it had some, uh, pretty significant ADA compliance issues, particularly in the nine-one-one center. Space was also limited for evidence storage, dispatch, briefing rooms, and impacting, uh, operational efficiencies across the board. Though, in some recent updates, we'll discuss this a little bit, um, some of the last two points on the slide there were, uh, were resolved in twenty twenty-four to some degree. So let's look at some facility options, how this kind of unfolds here. Building on the programmatic and operational needs identified in our assessment, we developed several facility options for the fire department. Um, Station forty-one, there's two renovation options, uh, estimated between eleven-point-six to twelve-point-three million. Uh, the higher cost reflects both the age and of the facility and the significant code upgrades that are required, um, once you start, uh, triggering renovation work. Uh, Station forty-two, a relatively newer facility, um, so not as much, uh, cost here. Light renovations in the two-point-one to three-million-dollar range, really focused on functional adjustments to accommodate growth, i.e., add another dorm. Station forty-three, uh, this would be a new facility, um, which would respond to the city's northwest growth, um, area, uh, which would be between twenty to twenty-four million dollars, uh, representing a critical long-term investment in response coverage and resiliency. So it's important to note that while escalation was originally contemplated for these facilities, which can vary by option depending on the, um, on the scope of the renovation or new construction, uh, you know, if, if the city delays in moving forward in a expeditious time, you just have to add escalation factor to account for, you know, growing money. Um, so now I'll walk you through each option for fire. So this slide represents your existing Station forty-one. Um, the left side of the slide is really all your living quarters, administration facilities, and the right side, the big box, um, is the apparatus bay, which holds all the engines and equipment. Currently, there's more bay space than what's required and so the renovation options really look at reper, repurposing some of the bay to capture more of the need for living quarters administration space. In option one, the dorms and restrooms are reconfigured to align, excuse me, um, with current industry best practices, uh, providing accommodations up to five personnel. This plan also introduces appropriately sized bay support areas and expanded administration space to support daily operations. Option two, we just take it a step further. Uh, we reconfigure a larger portion of the administration space and upgrade additional living areas. This option provides a greater flexibility and midterm functionality, ensuring that the station can better accommodate evolving, evolving operational needs. But as I mentioned in the beginning, um, you know, this facility is outdated, um, so this would be a, a midterm kind of improvement. It's a significant amount of money for midterm, uh, improvement, so, um, the city will have a hard decision in terms of what kind of money do you put into this facility versus do you, um, you know, reserve money and just build new. Station forty-two is the city's newest fire station. However, it was originally built with only three dorms. So as staffing needs increase, the renovation concept starts, um, I'm sorry, um, as the renovation concepts, um, they got to fold out additional dorm and reconfigured office areas, ensuring that the station can effectively support a larger crew. So in option one, uh, the existing office and fitness rooms are reconfigured to create space for an additional dorm. Uh, this targeted adjustment increases capacity while making efficient use of the existing footprint. Option two, next slide here, um, we expand into the restroom areas and improve circulation and functionality. So these adjustments are designed to accommodate a larger crew, but ultimately enhance flow and response times without having any, um, you know, weird kinks in the floor plan. And then we move into Station forty-three. Since we don't have an exact site, this is really a representative image, um, that could be applied to, um, whatever site that you're looking for in the future. Um, this design reflects modern fire standards and positions the city to meet future growth. And just as a, uh, additional illustrative diagram, this is really kind of a, you know, best-case floor plan scenario and how you would lay out a new facility as well, assuming a single, a single-story floor plan. So let's move on to the police department now. Um, option, oh, we've evaluated a couple, um, approaches on this one and narrowed them down to two. Um, both take advantage of the additional space created by City Hall's, um, or Finance's recent departure. Um, so in option one, a targeted renovation is estimated at five-point-seven million and option two, a more comprehensive remodel estimated at eighteen-point-nine million. And these options provide a range of investment levels, um, balancing immediate needs with more midterm flexibility. So we'll begin with the existing site plan for the police department. The current, uh, layout is not really ideal for modern policing, um, as you look at, you know, best, best practices in the industry, uh, but we've identified targeted renovation opportunities that can help improve flexibility and enhance day-to-day efficiencies. Here's your existing floor plan today. As mentioned, uh, the layout when we evaluated it, um, was undersized, outdated, and had limited space for critical operations like evidence storage, dispatch, and briefing rooms. And there were also a number of ADA compliance issues in the nine-one-one, uh, center, which further highlights the need for renovation and/or expansion. Um, though, as we mentioned, or as I mentioned, uh, we understand that the PD has since made some targeted renovations, um, this last year. Option one, um, is a targeted renovation focusing on the most critical needs. It upgrades the dispatch operation, repositions records and code enforcement, um, and makes use of the space vacated by the finance department move out of City Hall. It also addresses key support areas for the department, including upgrades to, um, some of the locker areas and restrooms and approve day-to-day functionality. Option two, um, takes the renovation to a, a much higher level, um, incorporating a significant expansion to the facility to add capacity for lockers, uh, wellness areas and break rooms. It also reconfigures existing spaces to align with the programmatic needs that were identified in the study, um, including dispatch, records, evidence, and investigations. Uh, this option provides a, a much more comprehensive, uh, midterm solution for the department's evolving growth and operational requirements. So in terms of implementation, we've organized the priorities into near-term and long-term actions. Uh, first, it's important to adopt formal fire response goals, uh, which provide a clear standard for service expectations and allow the city to measure progress. Next, we will recommend the beginning of the planning process for Fire Station forty-one and forty-two. 42 remodels, both of which are critical to maintain reliable service. Finally, addressing immediate police department needs through additional building, interim building upgrades will help bridge a gap into a more comprehensive solutions in place. A long-term perspective, the city should plan for construction of Fire Station 43 in the northwest part of the city, ensuring coverage as Atwater grows. We also recommend replacing Fire Station 41, as mentioned, entirely once funding is available as it's beyond its useful life. And lastly, the city will need to pursue capital for a full PD facility replacement solution eventually to provide capacity and functionality required for the future. So, benefits to the city. Ultimately, these investments will deliver three benefits to the city of Atwater. First, they're going to provide enhanced emergency response and public safety, ensuring your PD and fire personnel have the facilities they need to respond quickly and effectively. Second, the facilities will be upgraded to meet essential service facility requirements, which means they're designed to remain operational in event of a seismic event, a critical safeguard for the community. And third, these projects ensure alignment with both the city's future growth and the community's expectations for modern, reliable, and resilient public safety services. So, taken together, these benefits not only strengthen daily operations, but they also provide lasting security and confidence for the residents of Atwater. So, with that wordy presentation, but I'd like to thank you for your time, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. That's pretty good. Anybody have any questions?
I'm wondering if you involved the residents at all in your information gathering and development of this public safety master plan?
We did not.
You did not?
No.
So, when I'm looking at the calls for service for the police department, what I'm noticing is for 2023, priority three calls, the city and just for the public's information, what a priority three call would be is an non-emergency call where the police are not needed immediately. Let's say you wake up in the morning and your car is gone, you had it parked on the street, you wake up in the morning, your car's missing, you call the PD to report it, the car's long gone, and the person who stole the car is also long gone with your car. So, that would be a priority three. Priority one is it's emergent, you need immediate response from the PD. So, for the city of Atwater in 2023, those priority three calls, our officers responded to 22,233. Priority two calls, which are emergent but not like a priority one, 5,280 calls, and then priority one calls, which is emergent, we need an officer right away, 694. So, what the trends have been for the Department of Justice and the recommendations are, is that you use community service officers instead of police officers to respond to those priority three calls, but your report doesn't address that at all, so I'm just wondering why.
Stu, are you on the line?
Him and I have been emailing back and forth because he's not able to speak. This is not his issue, it's our issue, so that's unfortunate.
He would be the appropriate response. And to answer-
But he said that he would follow back up with staff, so he's able to watch and he's able to answer questions, so he would be able to follow back.
He'd be the appropriate response, but, I mean, it's really a matter of staffing as it relates to facility size in terms of what I can speak to, so if you have the same number of staff that you're supporting, then the facility size shouldn't really matter if it's going to be either a police officer or a community service officer, it's a matter of-
It matters to us from a cost perspective, and so it would be nice if we're addressing that in the report for a plan-
Sure.
-is my point.
Well, I think it points out one thing, you know, this is a plan, it's not set in stone, it's changeable, and, but at least we have a plan we can start with, but we got to make sure it doesn't sit on the shelf and we don't, we forget about it until like 20, 32 and a half, or whatever, and it's like, oh, we need another station. We've been talking about a new station for at least the last 20 years, you know, so. But it also points out that we're going to need some help with this as far as funding goes, and we need to start talking to our elected representatives at state and federal level that we're going to need some help, and we need to start talking to them about it now, not waiting. Okay, so I'm going to open this for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Thank you, Dustin.
So, here some months ago, there was a presentation, or going to be a presentation of the Public Safety Master Plan, and it got sent back for revision. So, I, looking through this thing, I was going blind trying to see where there was any kind of revision. There isn't. This is the same plan, just a different day. When I look at this, I am extremely disappointed that we spent $188,000 of taxpayer money out of Measure B, which is not what Measure B is intended for, but that's a discussion for another day. What this comes out to, though, is $1,372.26 a page for a report that, to me, is redundant in a lot of aspects, and where I see this is, for example, it goes into a lot of detail about, or rehash of, statistics that both chiefs bring to us and state to us on a regular, you know, basis on, you know, their call volume and things like that. When it comes to what I read in this thing about tasks and risk assessment, hazardous material ID, building fire risk, vegetation fire risk, hazmat risk, and on and on, there's a fire academy right out of Castle, I'm sure they teach that out there every day. Why is it in this report? Why are we paying for something that's just over, you know, all that stuff? Cardiacs, arrest, stroke, defibrillation, things like that. Don't get me wrong, I think the fire department does a wonderful job, but I think as far as their assignment of medical response is limited in a lot of different ways. The idea of fire getting out there, they can take vitals, they can do chest compressions, they can put oxygen on somebody, that kind of thing, but you're ultimately waiting on an ambulance. That's how you go and take care of that. And that also brings up where there's no reference in any of this report to the inadequate ambulance service in this city. We just had a guy hack up a bunch of people up here on Atwater Boulevard, and I seen a pisteressi ambulance all the way out of Chowchilla that had to respond out here. We are so woefully underserviced with ambulance, it's crazy. We've got a ladder truck that's going through a lot of maintenance issues here lately, and sooner or later, that's going to need to be replaced. Wasn't mentioned in the, in the report. Let's see, where else have I got to go with this thing here? Staff levels. There's no plan in here. We talk about how many people are, you know, in the PD, and, you know, it's not enough, and it's not going to meet future needs, so where's the plan for that? It points it out, but there's no plan for it. Yeah, that's what I thought. Anyway, the funding mechanism isn't there, nobody talks about the, anything having to do with developers' fees, Measure B, or any other funding measures. This is going to be a boondoggle, and I urge a no vote.
Okay. Keith?
All right. Well, most of my stuff is how outdated a lot of this information is in this report. Almost $190,000 spent on this report from most of this stuff back in 2022. Won't even have the correct number of officers that we have currently. You know, a lot of things in this report that you guys are paying for. My biggest thing is page 83 and 84, it talks about Station 42, but no mention in there is what's, where's the plan for the place in Station 42. I give this information to the city manager and to the police chief. Resolution number 1824-3 dated September 22, 2003 approved a design for Fire Station This station was for Fire Station 42 and Police Detective Substation located on Avenue 2. Resolution 2158-06 dated May 8, 2000, or 2006. This was for Station 42 and Police Substation on Avenue 2. Bonds were placed on Mellow 1 area, and the district, that district had to pay for this station slash 42 slash Police Emergency Operation Police Detective Substation. This was approved by prior city councils. This past chief, Salvador, decided to pull the police from the substation, so my question was, when are the police going to be put back into the substation that the people of Mellow 1 paid for? Okay? If we're going to be charged for this, and we were told when we bought us houses, this could have been for police and fire, we should have police presence over there. So, city manager calls me up tonight after I asked, this has been going on for six weeks at least, and police chief can't give a response without holding the hand of city manager here. So, when are we going to get police back put into there? We paid for this. The people of this district paid for this, and if now all of a sudden you're going to just say, "We don't care what the city council says anymore," we're just going to change our mind later on, and we'll do what we want.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I think you've put the cart before the horse. We need more police officers. I don't know how many times I have to come up here and tell you, kind folks, you need more police officers. You're going to have, you know, all this fancy building, but no police officers to take care of the business in the city. I think $187,000 to cut and paste is ridiculous.
Thank you. Anybody else? Saying nobody else come forward, I'm going to close public comment. Okay, any more discussion?
I'll just say that I wasn't involved in the initial planning for this public safety master plan. If I would have been involved, then I would have advocated for more community involvement or some community involvement in the development of the public safety master plan. I think we should rely on the people of Atwater to tell us what they need to feel safe. I don't think that we should pay $180,000 for a consultant to come in and give us an overly inflated plan that is not attainable. And I think that we need to be responsible fiscal stewards, and so by adopting a plan that we know that we are not going to have the ability to attain, I would just caution my colleagues against thinking about that. So, what I would recommend, and I think the only actionable item from this report, is to ask staff to focus on what data that we should be collecting, like what are the crime trends, the call volumes, what are the actual staffing needs based on Department of Justice standards and their recommendations, so that we can salvage what we've already spent on this plan. And I realize that neither chief that is here also was responsible, nor our city manager, for the development of this plan, so I want to recognize that here. I've been very outspoken in saying that I think it's terrible public safety master plan. So, the only thing that I can say is that I would recommend an alternative motion, I'd like to pose that, to receive and file the public safety master plan and direct staff to identify and report back on the key data sets that we should be collecting, such as those crime trends, call volumes, and staffing needs, so that we as a city can begin building a community-informed, data-driven framework for future public safety decisions and funding opportunities.
Did you get all that, Jen?
No. I mean, yes and no, receive and file, and then-
I saw, this is what I wrote, receive and file, staff to report back on key performance indicators.
That's what I got as well, and I wasn't able to keep up with the final part-
I got the receive and file and staff to-
But it is on record, and it's on the video, so we'll go back and make-
Absolutely.
I was just going to say that what's key is if the council understands the motion-
Yes.
-for the minutes, you can always watch the tape.
Yes, and typically, that's what I do.
The bulk of it is to receive and file it rather than adopting it and having staff report back for, you know, data that they feel we should be collecting based on the recommendations from the report, not necessarily adopting the report as it's written.
And if I may ask, Councilmember Rochester, because there's a resolution that's associated with this plan?
It does not include the resolution, as I understand it, because adopting the resolution would be adopting the plan.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Mayor, if I may. So, a worst-case scenario from the numbers reported in here, it looks like 39.3 million for fire, 24.6 for PD, for-
Hold on. Do we get a second yet? Did I miss that?
No, we did not.
Okay, we need to get a second if we're going to have a discussion.
For more discussion?
Yes.
Okay, a second. Okay, so it's a total of 63.9 million over 20 years, at the reported numbers, and we all know it's government, so there's going to be change orders, and it's going to go way up, but it looks to 3.195 million a year for 20 years, and I don't know how that's going to be sustainable, even, it is sorely needed, but I just, that's my concern.
Okay, we ready? Motion by Rochester, second by Raymond Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes, I can support that.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, how long will it be before we can get a staff report back?
By the end-
I'm not pinning you down because I know it won't be exactly-
I think no sooner, no later than the end of this calendar year, we will have something. Hopefully sooner than that. There's a handful of meetings left in the year.
Okay, thank you. All right. Done with that one. Now, we're on to item eight. Thank you, Dustin, for coming. Item eight, vacant commercial building and property ordinance or enhanced enforcement of the Atwater Municipal Code. City manager will make her staff report.
Yes, thank you. This item is being presented to the council because there was a previous request by the council to have us look into this. This is not a finished plan, but rather, let me back up, it's not a finished polished ordinance, rather, it is a checkpoint where staff, before we dive deeply into this, we'd like to get some direction from council. So, if you'll please progress the slides. This presentation was prepared to give an overview of what this is about. Vacant commercial property or vacant commercial building would be a building or vacant land that's zoned commercial that could be producing sales tax or potentially more property tax if it had thriving business going on at it. Please go forward. And if it's, if it doesn't have something going on- And if it's, if it doesn't have something going on, then the idea here, I think, is that the city's losing out on some, some taxes. So the question is, what can be done about that? Well, there are three options, which I'll get to in a moment. And, and those options are to create an ordinance similar to that of City of Stockton, for instance. There's a few cities that have these types of ordinances that wherein we would enforce a new regulation about not allowing vacancy for a certain amount of time at these commercial, you know, buildings. So let's keep going. And we have Daniel Garcia, our code enforcement manager here, at the end of this presentation. If he have any questions, he can answer things, for instance, what his average day looks like in case it comes up. Because we have a small code enforcement staff and this presentation, we'll get to it, but it'll show kind of what they, what, what he focuses on right now. So an ordinance and an enforcement plan. We also want to look out for blight. We want to protect the public and we want to hold, you know, property owners accountable if there are nuisances. Please go forward. So the key elements for a new ordinance would be a requirement for registration of businesses. They'd have to have maintenance standards. They'd have to protect their security and there would be inspections by our staff. And then we would, we would apply penalties for the properties that are not following the ordinance. Here's, the words are a little small, but it's a matrix that shows a few of the cities, La Mirada, Stockton, and Selma. And they, it shows the different examples of what's possible based on the scope. They'll have different registration deadlines. They'll have different annual fees based on what the legislative body in those cities wants to apply. And those fees may capture some of the effort that is applied by code enforcement staff to carry out this ordinance. And yes, thank you. So currently, currently we have several chapters in our municipal code that deal with blight, graffiti, dangerous buildings, nuisances. And we can and we do enforce all of these ordinances as they come up. So a great way, and I'm going to plug this again, a great way to, to do this is through TextMyGov. It's a, it's not really an app, but the, the phone number I think is two zero nine two one nine two zero nine nine. But the phone number's on our website, so you can double check it there. Basically, you just text that number and you'll get a text in response. You don't have to download an app or anything. And the text in response will, will ask for some keywords of something that you'd like to report. For instance, you can report graffiti or you can report, you know, weeds, different things. And then it'll reply back to you and ask for the address of the violation and description. And then it's really easy, but in that way, any, any resident or any, anyone that's in the city can, can, you know, text this number and, and report violations. So this is what we currently do. This is our current status quo. And these are our current ordinances. And let's keep going. So in these ordinances, this chart shows the key violations, what the city does, and how these problems are abated. And in the last column, it shows the city's powers to do fines, liens, whether or not there's jail time involved. It just depends on which law is being violated. And here's the enforcement workflow, and I'm sure Daniel could give a much better briefing on this. But it starts with a complaint or an inspection. He'll go out and do a notice of violation. He's to contact the property owner. And then he does re-inspections to make, to, you know, to see if the violation has been corrected or not. And there's an escalation. We send out citations and we do a cost recovery. And by the way, there's a new program that we're rolling out called Data Ticket. The police department is, is working on getting that going. And that's going to help us get a higher rate of cost recovery because sometimes people don't want to pay these citations. So what do you do? Well, you can escalate and you can send them to collections and you can, you can lien their, their property and different things like that. Let's keep going. So depending on what the violation is, there's going to be a different fine amount. And this just shows that liens are possible. Let's keep going. Here we have a slide showing what our code enforcement staff generally, on an average day, is working on. And as you can see, the bulk of, of our code enforcement is dealing with homeless enforcement. So if there's an encampment, if there's, you know, anything related to that, there's a lot of garbage that is built up from these encampments. And so code enforcement has a laser focus agenda going after and, and keeping our city clean. And it takes a significant amount of, of their time. And if we go on to the next slide. So these are some of our options. If we were to create a new ordinance based on the current workload and priorities that we have, this new ordinance and the registration and tracking and enforcement of this ordinance, we're estimating that it would take another FTE, a full-time employee, to carry out a program like this. Another option would be to divert, either divert some of the, the current priorities away from enforcing our current, the current issues that the city has and refocus them on vacant commercial buildings or properties. Or to just use our current ordinance and, and, and maybe not necessarily go after vacant buildings that don't have blight, but go after any buildings that have blight in a, in a, in more enhanced fashion where, you know, we could do more. Of course, if we had more staff, we could do more. So that'd be another option. And then finally, of course, there's the option of continuing, continuing our current operations to address both new and ongoing code enforcement violations with our current staff and basically, you know, use TextMyGov and continuing with, with the system that we currently have set up. So this will be my final slide. And that's okay. Well, I think, I think we can stop there.
Oh, okay.
So I, yeah, I think the, the rest is basically a repeat. So I, I'll just stop here and ask if there are any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, have any questions? Although before we have questions, I'd kind of like to have Daniel come up and explain his, he may answer some of the questions or we may have more questions.
Whatever questions you got, Mayor.
I don't want you to have to come to this meeting and then nobody asks you any questions.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll just say that I think you do an amazing job and I thank you for always being responsive to me. And I know that you're dealing with a lot of issues around our city. And I just want to publicly thank you for all of the work that you do. Thank you.
Daniel, I too, I want to thank you for everything you're doing. It's my understanding that sixty percent of your daily functions is dealing with homeless issues and, and those things. And appreciate if we can get feedback from you as to what you think is really viable in any of those three options that Chris gave us.
Some of the challenge would be if we do have an expansion on the code to start enforcing these vacant properties. And I guess I should preface by saying, most of the commercial vacant properties we have are unique in the fact that historically, most of them are out-of-town property owners. So versus a traditional code case where I have a, maybe a residence in town, I can get immediate contact with the resident. But the larger commercial properties are often out of town. So there is a process to even contact the owner to get them engaged in correcting the violations. Most of the time, once I do get in touch with the out-of-town property owners, they're not aware of any local vendors. They have local vendors to solve their blight problems maybe where they live. But now they have to find a local vendor to either evade the graffiti or remove the blight. So it is a longer process with commercial buildings. One of the challenges would just be our bandwidth to cover increased enforcement of these properties. Would be just one challenge.
I, I don't think I've understood the bandwidth of it.
Well, just the, if we wanted to comprehensively cover all the commercial buildings, just the man-hours to do it, I, I would have to reduce some of the enforcement I do and other things. As you mentioned, homeless enforcement, just the effort to keep Atwater, the blight in the, in the curbside appearance of Atwater with the homeless encampments and the associated garbage. If we're going to take on a larger program like commercial vacant properties, something's going to have to be reduced to account for the man-hours to cover that new direction.
Would you happen to know how many commercial buildings right now?
I think there would be, I couldn't tell you how many commercial buildings. I think there would be an equal amount of commercial vacant lots that we would deal with as much as buildings. The lots historically are going to have encampments, overgrown vegetation, over, vacant lots are very accessible for people just to do the quick, you know, pickup truck garbage push-off. So I would say we have an equal number of open lots that are commercially zoned as far as commercially vacant buildings. The commercial vacant buildings historically in Atwater are going to be graffiti issues and just general maintenance issues to the building.
Thank you.
Danny, do you have any questions?
So. Mayor, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you.
So I have a question. So like the Big Lots building or say Fashion Bug, which has been vacant for, gosh, almost 20 years now. They're, they're in well-maintained shopping centers. Right?
We do have occasional graffiti complaints over there. A few months back, I, I had located a water seeping up. There was a pipe that had burst underground that then there's water runoff municipal code violations. So they're, they're maintained generally, but again, historically in Atwater, vacant buildings will attract as a congregating place, convenient congregating place for our unhoused population.
Okay, thank you.
I think my, my point goes back to what my overall goal was to hold these individuals who are coming into our city and purchasing our buildings and our properties and then essentially out, overpricing and, and out, and outpricing the individuals who are actually living here, who would be able to potentially open a business in, in one of those buildings. And so that's one of my biggest issues. And what I was hoping to get from this would be making those individuals uncomfortable enough to where they would actually start being more engaged in the process to get these buildings rented, which would generate more tax revenue for the city, which would go toward Measure B, which would potentially fund positions to be able to hold these individuals accountable. So that, that was, that's my real point in, in asking for this. Of course, the blight is an issue. There are several buildings that I drive by in the city and I text our city manager or I'll text Daniel and say, ugh, you know, it's, again. But really what I'm thinking about is generating revenue, tax revenue for the city and making these individuals uncomfortable who are just setting up shop and, and using our properties as tax write-offs.
I, I'm not sure that you can make those people feel uncomfortable. They have so much money. They, this is a, this is a great thing. This is a great idea for them. They have money and they can write this off like crazy. We would have to find them in a measure amount of money for them to feel uncomfortable.
So just thinking, as, as I'm hearing the conversation here, an idea just sprang to mind, which is, goes back to our strategic plan. In the strategic plan, it talks about evaluating recruiting for an economic, economic development manager that could, for instance, you know, talk with these landlords and, and see if through networking and through maybe a carrot approach, there's a way to, to recruit businesses to come to Atwater. And essentially, we raise our tax base through, you know, marketing and networking with people. And that would be part of their job. And, you know, of course, they could help us with a lot of other things, economic development related. But that's just an idea I had.
I just think the second option is the way to go because you don't create the new bureaucracy and government overreach. You can get action right away. You know, we, if we were to approve something like that today, we could start on it tomorrow. You're not adding any new burdens to property owners, just enforcing the laws that are already there. Right? It's like you can create new gun laws, but that's just more laws for the criminals to break. So it just, it's the enforcement and it's the penalty side. So you hit them where it hurts and that's usually in the wallet. So I think you should, you focus more on the penalties rather than the adding new, new laws, new ordinances, you know, focus more on, on that. Because the good property, the good property owners won't be affected by this now. It'll only be the bad actors that haven't been doing the right thing to begin with. So I think that's kind of where we need to go. And we don't have to worry about any, you know, legal headaches that could come from this. And I know doing nothing isn't an option, but I think option A is just too much of an overreach. And if we do something like this and move forward, it'd like say six months to a year and we don't see much change, then we can revisit it. It's just my opinion.
Well, how about we let the public have a say and find out what they, what they think? Thank you, Daniel. Opening now the public comment. Sean?
City Council, Sean Connor, 1301 Drakely. Big fan of Atwater. It's almost like if we made business friendly in Atwater and we allowed site plans to be approved and we didn't have backlog permits and so on and so forth, we would in fact have the revenue base. We would have people coming here and wanting to do things. We wouldn't have slum lords running these apartment complexes because we have the higher, highest water sewer garbage in the valley, right? Where it becomes unaffordable as a landlord to own property here, right? So there's a lot of things that we can do behind the scenes without adding new laws. We do have, like people on city council have mentioned, we have the current laws in place. It's a metric of enforcing them. I would just like to highlight, and again, I'm not beating up our code enforcement officer. At thirteen sixty-fifth street, right? We slapped what? Don't quote me, seventeen thousand dollars in fines on a known meth house that was able to operate for at least three years since I lived next to it and essentially nothing was done. I don't know if that was a failure on the police department slash code enforcement. I don't know, right? But there's a lot of things that we can do with the current, in the current constructs of government. And that's us unleashing private business. That's government getting out of the way. Let's make it efficient. Let's make it easy and the city will grow. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Keith?
I gotta agree with Brian. I think, you know, we need to go out and force this stuff we have on the books. Back in maybe twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we eliminated code enforcement position. And it goes back to say, what is Measure B for? You know, the people want enforcement. Linda brings up the thing about more cops. We need more code enforcement. I think Danny's doing a great job, but he doesn't have a whole lot of time on his hands. This council needs to recognize what the people wanted and look at the things that are being spent in Measure B and put that towards code enforcement or hire more police officers. We get more code enforcement, they can generate more money for the city. They can go back into Measure B and we can hire more people that, this way. So I urge the council to really review the spending in Measure B. Hundred ninety thousand dollars for something that will end up in a file cabinet. You know, did we really need to spend that money? We all know that we need fire stations. We all know that we need more police officers. We know we need all that. Why do we have to spend that much money when we could have got another code enforcement officer on the street to, to clean up this city? to, to clean up this city? He only has so much time. And you can see 60% on homeless. He doesn't have time to do a lot of these other things. So I urge you guys to take a look at that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Adam Reed. I agree with what Keith Plowski and what Brian said. Daniel does a great job. He's really responsive. Anytime I have contacted him, he's either taking care of it, or if he's got questions, he calls me back, as everybody knows, and it's not his fault. The municipal code needs a little bit of updating, because the dump site next door to my house is still live and active. But I've got no problem with, you know, going after out-of-town absentee owners and stuff, because most of the time the blight is at those properties, and they do use them, you know, as tax write-offs and stuff like that. So the fines don't really, you know, low fines aren't really going to mean much to them. But I mean, we've already got a lot of laws in place. We just need to enforce them. Code enforcement needs more help. They have for a long time. To get these new fire stations and get these police station remodels and stuff like that, you know, we've got Measure B. And if we can generate more sales tax, it's definitely going to help that. We need, and one of the biggest things that we could do to attract businesses here is we need, we need some more rooftops. We haven't had significant residential development here in a long time. And to get people, people used to want to live in Atwater. One, the utilities were low, and the crime was low. So I think we need to get back to the basics, and we need to become a city of peace and morals and law and order. You know, we need to start citing people for traffic violations, running red lights, speeding, running around with their exhaust cut-off and stuff. Whenever I was in high school, I loved running around with my exhaust cut-off, but guess what? Mendoza stopped me. He pulled me over, and I had to put my exhaust back on. I don't think that happens anymore, because I live on Fruitland, and I can hear them all day long, up and down Wenton Way, up and down Bellevue, doing donuts behind Save Mart. So I, back to the basics, law and order, code enforcement, clean up the town. I mean, we've got, you know, some property owners in town that have properties that everybody complains about. I mean, the Creamery is a perfect example. My understanding is, is that they wanted to do a remodel of it, and then the costs were too high because the city wanted all the utilities undergrounded behind the building. Well, I've seen the city run around on Fruitland. You guys just put a bunch of utilities overhead, brand-new utilities. Race is running around town putting utilities down Wenton Way and everywhere overhead. So like, when is the, why isn't the city, like, why are we allowing new utility going overhead? You know, we're going to make this property owner that wanted to make an investment, but, you know, we're going to kill the project because he's got to put all these utilities underground. But I would like to see, you know, back to the basics, peace and morals, law and order. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jim?
My question goes to the homeless issue, and not just necessarily in vacant buildings and that type of thing. And I know, Danny, you're probably dealing with that more than you ever wanted to, but my question is this, you know, the Fourth of July Committee, which I'm on, you know, we have vendors come, and, you know, they are health certificate harassed like crazy. And that goes for just about everybody. I mean, you know, brick and mortar, restaurants, everything. The point is that the health department is huge about that. But when I go down Santa Fe and I get down towards 59, and I look on both sides of, of that street there, and look behind the AMPM, and I look across towards the railroad tracks and everything, where's the health department in all of this? I mean, and it's the same thing here for houses in this city. Adam brought up about the Creamery. Good points, all good points. And now we've got Ivors and Alcorn, got an abandoned building over there on Wenton Way. What's going to happen with that thing? The roof is gone, you know, so, you know, at what point does the city say enough and either demand that it be demolished, or, and I don't know if this is possible, but for the city to possibly even, you know, take it. I'm, I'm all for property rights like the next guy. But when you've got a place like the Creamery, or the, there's an abandoned gas station that's up Atwater Boulevard, just up from the Creamery, and, and then this Ivors old funeral home, those places need to go, or they need to be prime property, one or the other. There can't be any, any of this other stuff in between. Confiscate it, whatever, but this homeless stuff is never going to get taken care of. Never. You're fighting a losing battle with this thing, because you don't have fire in the belly and the politicians to go and do what they should be doing. So you've got the trash and everything all over the place, and the health department, and environmental people from the state that turn their head. When you look at a canal, and you see encampments over there, or, you know, even homes and things like that. I saw one today. I came up Fruitland off of Schaefer, and up on the canal, I couldn't believe it, some homeless guy with a bike and all kinds of goodies, of course, and all that, dragging a trailer that he built a house on, if you can believe that. It looked like a phone booth or something. I, it was incredible. That type of stuff, it's not only a blight to the eye, but it's a blight to the city. And when that guy needs to relieve himself, guess what? He's next to a canal. Where's the health department and the environmental people on that one?
Anybody else? Good evening.
Yabara, 585 Village Circle Drive. Maybe we should just send a letter, try reaching out to them first before we find these buildings. I don't know if anybody's done that. I mean, I see a lot of people complain about it, but maybe go door knock. I mean, you see a lot of people, and we're said, like, the mayor, he's out there picking up trash. Maybe go door knock and talk to these people first. Maybe they're having financial issues. Maybe there's something you guys can do on tax-wise, and cutting that down, and maybe that'll get their door back open to fix an AC unit, a broken pipe, something, and then they can get a tenant inside. I mean, it's the easiest thing to do. It takes a couple extra minutes to, hey, go talk to them. Somebody may be having an issue, and that's why they're not being able to get a tenant in. It's the easiest thing to do before you start dropping more fines on them. And then what are they going to do then? They're not going to be able to get a tenant in, because they can't afford to pay what you guys are already hitting them with. So just start at the basics.
Thank you. Cory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Corey Billings, Heather Glenn Lane. I think the key first thing we need to do is really focus on our code enforcement department, giving them the resources they need in order to be able to do, whether it be the current regulations or new regulations. They're grossly understaffed. They're out there doing everything they possibly can, but it's only a couple of people. They need more manpower. They need more, they need more support. And I think what we're seeing is a huge change in society today that is ready to say, we are tired of the trash in the communities. We are tired of our community looking horrible. We used to have a saying here, "Community pride citywide," and we used to try to work together to make this community a better place. Code enforcement's the great starting point. I agree that sometimes fines hurt people, but at the same point in time, I think you need to give whatever regulations you adopt tonight, whether they're the current ones we have or new regulations, give them teeth, so that our code enforcement can stand up and say, here is what we're going to do, and this is going to be the penalty for doing, and making it to the point where the homeowner, or the property owners, feel it and understand that we as a community want a better place to live.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so nobody come forward on closing public comment. Chris, I have a question for you. If we were to hire more staff, how would that affect the budget?
Well, the current budget that we have, as, as we know, we're in a structural deficit. We have been closing the gap over the last couple of years. We, we went from like a $2 million deficit to about 1.1 million. And now we're sitting close to $400,000 to $500,000 deficit. So if we add, then, I mean, the question is, do we, are we looking at somewhere else to cut? Or are we just going to add to the deficit? And that's, you know, whatever the council wants to do.
All right, thank you. Okay, any more discussion?
I'll just say in our discussion, I would agree with Councilmember Raymond's option two. I, my question was the same. You know, I would like to know what that would look like in terms of hiring an additional staff member. I do believe that it's worth it to the residents of Atwater for us to make investments like that, rather than making investments in $180,000 reports that we're going to put on a bookshelf. So to me, that the investment for another code enforcement officer to deal with the very real issues that we as residents of Atwater are looking at and dealing with, I think that it's an investment that would be very well-spent for additional staff there. My comments.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for Mr. Garcia or Supervisor McDaniel, but does the county still have the strike team that deals with the criminal migrants? What's the name?
I'm not aware of the county's enforcement arm. I take code enforcement calls from the county that originate in the city, but I'm not sure if they're...
Okay. Because I know that at one time, John Chekley was in charge and was going out, and he was helping, you know, the cities with different things for the camps.
Oh, yes, there is quite a bit of traffic, even more recently, of various outreach groups engaging our unhoused community, trying to offer placement. We're just trying to turn around the culture of accepting the placement once it's offered. It's a slow process, but there is lots of engagement around the city lately.
Okay. I didn't know if that was something that maybe helped you alleviate some of that 60% of your time, so focus on this, so.
Quite a bit more lately, a noticeable amount lately.
Good, okay.
I, I agree. I think we, we definitely need to have more code enforcement. Another officer would be great.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. I don't know that we need to go do new ordinance and all that. We could try with hiring somebody new, and then giving some extra manpower might be helpful for this. I mean, we already have code on the books. I mean, that'd be perfect, but we already have it on there.
Would it be, would it be possible to see a potential analysis of what could be brought in versus what the salary cost would be? So we could see, because I know when Mr. Garcia first started, that's one of the things was that his position coming in, he pretty much funded himself by actually enforcing and collecting. So rather than add to the structural deficit, which is something I don't want to do, it could be something to where, you know, with what's out there right now, the potential revenue could outweigh the cost. I don't know if we can get some kind of analysis on that.
Yeah, we can work on that as a first step, if the council would like to do that as a first step, or if you'd like to just have us come back with a budget amendment, and whatever the council wants to do.
Well, how about if you did the analysis, and if it looked good, bring the budget amendment, too?
Yeah, they're not mutually exclusive. We could do, you know, one-step, two-step kind of thing.
Yeah, I would agree with that, absolutely.
So, Mr. City Attorney, do we need a motion on this?
Does that have to be part of the motion, or does, can that just be direction that's given to the city manager?
I would like it to be, to include in the motion.
Okay.
So it's very clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to adopt or move forward with option two with a caveat of a fiscal analysis regarding adding a new code enforcement officer to what we receive. I don't know how to structure it the right way, adding that, but you know what I'm saying? So we have a fiscal analysis to where it's the cost recovery, you know, worth the hiring of an additional officer.
Understood.
Did you also want to add, because I know the mayor had mentioned the budget amendment portion as well, or?
Yeah, that's fine. We can add the, if it looks good, where we could bring back the budget amendment.
Okay, so as we do this analysis, if it looks promising...
Do you have a second?
Then we'll include the budget amendment.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Rochester. Raymond?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you for that. Now around item nine, discussion and possible action on modifying the review process for the city's warrant register. Chris?
Yes, so at the last council meeting, there was a brief discussion about whether it's required to have the warrant list as part of the agenda packet, which it's not. It's not a requirement to have that. It's just something that we've always done. So the question was, what could we do differently? And we see two options. One would be to do a receive-and-file and keep it part of the agenda packet. And another option would be to just post it on the website in a prominent location and maximize the transparency of the document doing that. So that would be one recommendation that we could have. And I don't know if there's any questions?
So if we just posted it on the website, that would eliminate public comment on that item, to where they would have to come in strictly for the public comment at the end of the meeting, is that correct?
They could still, they could still express public comment during the meeting.
Just not part of the consent?
Correct.
I'll just say, you know, that this came from discussion at the last meeting, for those who weren't present. And I posed a question to our city attorney about the requirements or the government code section that was attached to the council actually approving versus a receive-and-file, which is what other cities are currently doing. And so it just seemed to make more sense to me to keep the transparency. I appreciate the transparency. And a lot of people actually appreciate that transparency, but to cut out the council actually approving it, since the council's already pretty much approved it through the budget process, I feel like it's, we're splitting hairs at meetings with dissecting the warrant list when it's not, when the bills have already been paid, and so why are we, why are we doing that part? So that was, that was me who brought that forward.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
I think I agree with Councilmember Rochester, if I heard it right. I think your option A was to leave it part of the agenda, just remove it from the consent calendar. I think if you put it on the website, is the council going to take the time and review it and take a look at it? If it's on the agenda, not only council's going to, going to be able to review it easier, but everybody here is going to see better. So I suggest to vote for option A, I think it was.
Anybody else?
Yeah, you know, this whole thing with the warrant list, that's, that's really important. Transparency is, is the working word here, all caps. This is the thing that, that I know I look at, and there's a lot of other people that look at, and there's things on there. There's three things. You've got what fund it's coming out of, who it's going to, and for what dollar amount. You know, it doesn't explain that. It talks in general terms a lot of times on just exactly where it's going. So it, it, it's the transparent part to come up here and say, hey, what about checks such and such written on this date for this amount of money from this fund and all that? You know, it's, it's the way it works. And, you know, I know I've come up here and bugged you guys about that before, but obviously, though, we need to keep that warrant list so that you guys are obligated to look at it. You bury it inside the website. Who's going to go to that? You guys don't even question half of the expenditures on there to begin with. I, I don't remember the last time I heard a council member ask any questions about an expenditure. So... an expenditure. So I mean, this is something that I think you need to look at as a separate line item, just like they do in Livingston. Livingston has their warrant list, just a separate line item. If anything, just somebody go and say, okay, approve to receive it, not necessarily to approve, you know, the expenditures, something along that line. Get creative. There's a way to go and get around this.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody else come forward, I'm going to close public comment. Anna, can you explain to us how this whole process works? Before, before it gets here, back, back it up to when the bills come in and how it's approved by you, and then it's in the budget and all that stuff?
I can explain what I know of the process here. So the process at Atwater has been where we run, our check run every other week to line up with the city council meetings. And so we don't actually mail the checks unless it's called a pre-written, which is one that the city manager and myself have approved to be released prior to the council date. So we don't actually mail the checks until come Tuesday morning. In other cities that I've worked in and have colleagues in, most of the time you're mailing the check either on a weekly basis so that you can turn around and pay your vendors on a more frequent interval of time. And then one or two things happen. A check register goes for statement of information purpose in the agenda packet, but those items have already been approved in the budget. And then the expenditures are brought forward for the council through the annual audit. So the expenses are paid in conformance with the budget that's been approved at the beginning of the fiscal year. The expenditures are then reported in total through the annual financial audit. So one or two things could happen. Either an information report is included in the agenda packet, or some cities post it on the website. Some cities don't do anything, but some cities will post it on the website. So the, I think the difference really is just understanding that we contractually already owe the vendors. We're not actually approving, that's already been done through the whole budget process, procurement process. And we now contractually owe that vendor. And a lot of times we're up against a net 30. So, you know, depending on whatever we've been going on, we need to get our vendors paid. And so if we're waiting for a council approval, well, we've already satisfied that through all these steps. So sometimes that might even get us in a little bit of hot water with our vendors. We need to be very careful of that, and that's when it goes through another level review, and sometimes we'll have to issue that. Does that answer?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Most of it, okay.
Okay, I meant that's what it is, that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah. So I would say in, in my experience, typically a warrant register or a, a list of checks is presented in the agenda packet, but with a very clear distinction that it's not actually being discussed and appro, the, the payments themselves aren't being approved for release, because that's already been approved through other process. But it is a, an information, an information vehicle to include it in the agenda packet.
And also, if a council member, I know some comment was made, but council members don't usually question the, the checks coming through, but we get the agenda in advance with that, and council members are more than welcome to call you or the city manager if they have any questions about.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We still, you know, so one of the ideas that Chris and I would like to eventually move towards when we get stabilized staffing is issue a weekly check payment to our vendors. That way it's, it's happening on a routine weekly basis. And so those checks are going to be going out every week to our vendors. You would still get a, the same exact report that you have now for that two-week period of time. Those checks have already been mailed to the vendors, but any questions at any time that you have, because we have those invoices on file and we can let you know what they're for, sure.
And the public's welcome to give you a call as well.
Yeah.
Yep. Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve option A and, and do the receive and file option and have the warrants as part of the agenda, but not part of the consent calendar.
So just want to make sure I'm clear on it. To, to, to be, it's got to live somewhere, so it can live in the consent calendar as an action item to receive and file. So it can either be the consent or the regular business. I think, take that to be what you meant.
Yeah, so would that, so when the mayor asks for council to approve it, would that live in its own? Like it would have like a receive and file?
No, it would live within the consent calendar, but it would, the action is not to approve. The action would be to receive and file.
Yes, yes.
A second. Second.
I, I had a question for the city attorney. Is another option somehow to have it part of the agenda packet as an, as an item that's listed as informational item for the, for the council, but not have an act, a specific action that the council would take on it, like a receive and file?
Yeah, there are, well, you know, the cleanest way would be a receive and file. I mean, there are other agenda packets out there that have communications, so it's a listing of communications the city's received from certain places. But ultimately, even as to those, those councils are receiving and filing. The distinction is, though, they are not approving the payment of those checks. All of those checks can have already been mailed out, but the council's receiving and filing as an informational receipt. They're not making a thumbs up or thumbs down as to whether they agree or disagree with it. They are just, they are acknowledging that this is the information that is presented and they are receiving it. I don't think it's consequential that it's part of the consent calendar at all. The key is not where it lives. The key is what is the action?
Thank you.
Motion by Rochester, second by Raymond. Ambries?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes, yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you for that. All righty, so now we're at, going towards the end here. Comments from the public.
At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however it's not required. Action will not be taken on any item and the item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and replaced on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Under the Brown Act, members of the public must address the council as a legislative body of the city, not other members of the public or staff. And I do want to say, you guys have been really good about this the last couple of years, but we've kept it civil here. Appreciate that. I am now opening public comment. Speaker cards? Sorry, sorry, bad timing there. Anybody who would like to speak, you're welcome to come forward now. Or not, that's fine. Good evening.
Evening. I guess I'll be the brave person to kick things off here. Evening, City Council. Carthage Prasad from Congressman Adam Gray's office, here to give a quick legislative update. And thank you, guys, for all the excellent work that we were able to accomplish in August. We couldn't have done it without a lot of your assistance. Thank goodness it's over, because I am glad that the boss is in DC, because that means we don't have to deal with a lot of chaos that comes from having the congressman in district. So really happy about that, but even more happy that we were able to get a lot of good meetings and stuff done in August, including but not limited to a Veterans Advisor Committee meeting, a Labor Roundtable, and an Agriculture Roundtable. All of those were super productive, and they've informed our legislative priorities going forward through the month of September. And we have been very busy with all of the chaos that's happening in DC, but we're still getting stuff done. At the beginning of the month, the congressman co-sponsored the Rural Veterinarian Workforce Act, which is a bill that would provide educational debt relief to veterinarians. He also helped introduce the Protecting Healthcare and Lowering Costs Act of 2025, which does exactly what it says on the tin. It aims to lower healthcare costs and restore Medicare access to a lot of constituents within our district. Additionally, we had our big grand opening of our new office in Merced, 602 West 20th Street. Obviously, you're always welcome to swing by if either you or any members of City Atwater have any questions or concerns. We're also happy to announce that we've opened up submissions for the Congressional App Challenge, which is open to all middle or high school students. You can submit as a team or as individuals, teams up to four. Deadlines are on August 30th, so head over to our website, gray.house.gov, to find details on how to submit. So if any members of the council or public present know any very smart children who are most likely smarter than me, because I can't code, they know how to make an app, would love to see their idea, and I'm pretty sure if they win, they get a trip to DC. So I'd say that's a good incentive. Finally, happy to announce that I will be here for our mobile district office hours in Atwater at 760 East Bellevue on the 25th from 1:30 to 3:30. So if any members of the public have tomatoes to throw, don't worry. You don't have to drive all the way to Merced. You can come over to Atwater and throw them here. So more than happy to have you. It's always a great time. I know members of the county and Assemblywoman's office are usually there. Yeah. So always a pleasure to have people there. We have some good discussions and looking forward to it. So, yeah, that's about it, all I have for now. So thank you.
Great, thanks for that information.
Just one thing. We were discussing the addition of a, an additional code enforcement officer, officer, thank heavens. And you're all talking about it, analysis and how we're going to find them. What happened to Measure B? I think there's some money in there. You could probably start right off with it. And we've got everything else in Measure B, so I just kind of thought adding a very productive code enforcement officer would be pretty cool.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening again. Adam Reed, I'm going to come and talk to you as the president of Old Town Atwater. This last weekend on Saturday, we had a very successful fall festival. It's our second annual fall festival since the Chamber stopped holding it. And we had our fourth year of the car show that we coupled together a couple of years ago with the fall festival. Really good turnout. The weather was good. It started to get a little bit warm, but everything turned out really well. I want to thank the mayor for coming out and checking it out. Always appreciate your support, coming out and doing that. And then also Justin and his staff are always great to work with. As far as getting barricades and stuff out, Renee's always on top of it. So definitely appreciate Public Works helping that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to hitchhike on what Linda just said about code enforcement. We just went and threw down $188,000 for this public safety report. And I mean, if, I don't think Danny makes $188,000 a year. So it seems to me that, you know, if we can afford something like that, we can sure afford another code enforcement guy and give him a break, maybe even two. You know, I mean, this is, this is money that can be spent, just the way the ordinance says, for the good of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I come this time wearing my Blossmore Healthcare District hat to thank the city for allowing Bloss to sponsor the Second Annual Senior Information Day. It was a huge success. Last year, we had 26 information booths. This year, we were able to, to put 30 in there and now have a waiting list already for next, next year. Last year, we saw about 75 individuals walk through. This year, within the first hour and a half, we had at least 125 individuals walking through that event. Our seniors walked away with great information about the resources available in our community. We fed everybody in the building lunch, and then at the end of the day, we sat and played bingo and had great prizes. Seniors loved it. But then Bloss stepped up and said, everybody who's still here, we have ample food left, so you will be taking another meal home with you. So we made sure that the seniors of our community were very well fed that day. And again, they received great information and great resources. So I want to thank you for allowing us to use the community center. It was definitely very well received.
Good, thank you for sharing that info. Anybody else? Okay, see nobody else come forward? I'm closing public comment. Okay, we're going to do council updates. We're going to go in a little different order today. Brian, you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to take a moment to honor the life of Rod Dash. I've known the Dash family for as long as I can remember, and probably even before that. My mom used to babysit for Rod when he was little, and my dad even let him borrow his car to go to prom. Over the years, you know, Rod built a remarkable career in law enforcement, serving both the Merced Police Department and right here in Atwater, where he retired with dedication and integrity. When I was considering a path in law enforcement in the early 2000s, Rod is the one I called. And he's the one that got me to move forward with the police academy. That's the kind of steady, trusted person he was. Rod will be deeply missed, and our hearts and prayers are with the entire Dash family during this difficult time.
Thank you for that. Danny?
Want to thank staff for helping out with the cleanup of an alleyway between Olive and Atwater Boulevard. Resident reached out to me and let me know that you guys did an awesome job. Just one side note, they said that there's still a vehicle there. They don't know if it's being camped in or, I have the address I can give you. So if we can just get someone to look, take a look at that. Also, went past, or went, went driving down on Olive Avenue just last night, and boy, is that a different road already. So, and I, I've heard nothing but good things from the residents, or some of the residents that are on Olive Avenue. So thank you guys a lot for that. I know the project isn't completed just yet, but it's 100% better. Thank you.
John?
I do want to express my condolences to the Dash family and everything that's going on. Really do. Appreciate Linda and all the things she's done for our, our family and my family. I do want to remind you that next Friday, October 3rd, is the historic basketball football game between Atwater High and Buhat Colony. And I encourage everybody from the council to come out and support our two football teams together. So we want to do that. The last thing I want to talk about is a, a huge sentiment that is happening in our country. And for the last 10 days, two weeks, it's been weighing on my mind dramatically. And for the most of my life, I've kept my faith very personal. I felt uncomfortable speaking about, about my faith from the diocese, or in any political settings. My relationship with the Lord has always been sacred and pragmatic. But in the last few weeks, I've spoken more about Jesus Christ than I have in my entire political career. And I believe I'm not alone. Across the country, there are many people experiencing a spiritual awakening stirred by the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk. When I was young, my family went to church at least three times a week. And that was kind of common in the city of Atwater. Faith, faith was woven into the fabric of our community. Today, the fabric feels frayed. We live in a time where moral foundations are being challenged, where children are taught they can redefine truth and changing their gender at recess. There's lawlessness that is excused by emotion. There's lawlessness that is excused by emotion, where personal accountability is often replaced by blame. There are way too many single parents in our, our country. These divisions, I believe, are being perpetuated by a cultural movement that has strayed away from our values our nation was built upon. For years, I have stood as an independent voter, committed to evaluating both sides of fairness, but I can no longer stand on a political fence. I have watched run-shy increasingly reject the teachings of the Bibles and the principles of law and order. I've seen a new ideology arise, one that we, that I can only describe as vocation. A belief system that seems to replace faith, tradition, and truth with confusion and division. Charlie Kirk's death is a breakout call. It reminded me of our founding fathers envisioning a land of freedom, a land of law and order, and one nation under God. I'm tired of trying to explain the contradictions. I'm ready to stand completely for something. Both political parties have their flaws, because they are led by imperfect people. But after deep reflection, I believe that my most closely, I most closely align with the values taught by the Lord and upheld in our Constitution, and I find those values in the Republican Party. It's the decision, this decision is not, does not mean much to our nation, or to California, to Merced County, or even the city of Atwater, but it means something to me today. I am officially changing my political affiliation away from independent to Republican Party. May God, may God guide us all, and may we never forget the foundation upon which this country was built, not out of trepidation, but out of conviction. That is all I have to say.
Thank you, John, that was very well said. Alisa?
It'll be difficult to top that, so I'll just go through my dates of things that I've done over the past couple of weeks. September 11th, I attended the National Day of Remembrance that was put on by the city. It made me very proud to be an Atwater resident. I think the city did an amazing job with assisting, I know that it isn't the city who actually puts it on, but the city is heavily involved in orchestrating that event, and I think that it was very well done. On the 18th, I spoke to the Atwater Kiwanis Club. They are planning to have a tour, actually, at the castle, the Castle Air Base of the self-driving car program there, and so I'm excited to be able to attend with, with that group. I was also able to attend the farmer's market that evening. Again, I think we have two more left, not that I'm counting, but we have two left, so I hope to see everyone out there. The next one will be not this Thursday, but next Thursday. And on the 20th, I was able to attend the Atwater Historical Society's Annual Fundraiser Dinner. I saw a lot of you guys out there, I was working in the kitchen, hiding in the kitchen, but I was there, and it was good to see everyone who was there. I have expressed some concerns to our city manager, I've received a couple of complaints from residents about transients at Veterans Park, and also, I received a photograph last week of a glass pipe that was located in the park, near the playground where our children are playing, and I found that to be very alarming, and I have asked for additional officers to patrol that area and to ensure that we're moving the transients along. I have sincere, deep concern for our children playing on that playground, finding that glass pipe, it could have been laced with fentanyl, and we could have had a dead child as a result of that, which would be tragic. The other thing that I will say is that probably a month or so ago, I did ask for a traffic study to be conducted at the intersection of Schaefer and Manzanita due to the numerous traffic accidents that we've had there, so I would like for, to receive an update on that. So, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Justin, for Olive Avenue. I did take a ride down there the other day, drove the whole thing, it's, it's nice. I have some other streets you could do next. I'm sure, I'm sure you get calls, I know Mitchell behind Foster Freeze is kind of rough. Yeah, 9/11, I want to thank Police and Fire for your efforts in doing that, your staff, Nora for putting that all together, Janelle for her help in putting things together as well. I think it was one of the better ones that have been done, you know, we had a different crew, you and Josh being new at this, Nora being new at it, but you pulled it off really well, it was, it was well done, thank you. That's it.
Just a few quick announcements. Atwater Night Out, Tuesday, October 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, this is a free event. The city's hosting a Halloween pumpkin decorating contest on October 10th at the Community Center for ages 3 to 17, with a $10 cost per participant. Local businesses are supporting it, and there's prizes from hunter farms. There was a lot of popular demand for movies in the parks, so we're going to have one more this season. It'll be at, on the Bloss grounds on Friday, October 17th, at sunset, the movie will be Hocus Pocus. And finally, there's a Fall Cleanup Event scheduled October 18th. The address is 2877 Atwater Boulevard, it'll be 7:00 AM to noon, same location as last year. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to be going to close session next, and the items are Conference with Real Property Negotiations, Agency Negotiators being the city manager and the Public Works Director, negotiating parties being National Retail Properties LP, property location being 303 East Bellevue Road, Atwater. And the parcel number is 156-060-011, that's one case. Second item is Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. And the third item is Public Employee Performance Evaluation. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak about closed-session items, the podium is now open for you.
Good evening, Adam Reed. I wanted to talk about the performance evaluation for the city manager, Chris Home. I came back in July whenever he had his other performance evaluation, and we were coming off the heels of, of what I felt was a very successful meeting on a 438-lot residential subdivision here in Atwater that we desperately need, because we've made no efforts towards meeting our arena goals and our state housing. I praised Chris Home at that meeting, because I thought that we were going to be moving forward in a positive direction. Since then, the project's stagnant, not much is happening with it, and we're, we're growing a little bit frustrated on it. We made, you know, we had a transition between city engineers, and John O'Connor put together a meeting with me, Chris Home, he, somebody invited Mike Nelson, which is fine. And, well, I didn't want to point it out, I, I don't have a problem with you being there, it was fine that you were there.
Thank you.
I didn't want it to, to come off as a negative. John O'Connor, Chris Home, me and the develop, the developer on that, and, and again, and Spencer, the new, the new city engineer, I thought it was a very productive meeting, and here we are, two weeks later, and like, Chris Home, to his effort, to his, to his efforts, did call me and let me know how important it was, this project and stuff, that he was going to take it on personally. And then today, I found out, I got a, I finally got a bounce-back email that John O'Connor, I guess, isn't at the city anymore, so that's probably why. So I don't know how sincere it is, I hope you are sincere, Chris. The, the efforts in the past have not, haven't, like, led, it, it's hard for me to, to, to take your sincerity on that, I hope you prove me wrong, but I am, I am disappointed in that. I've got a slew of other projects, I got a Redwood parcel map that I've been working on for three years behind Taco Bell, that we're trying to get approved, that got stalled for so long, and I think now we've got a direction on it, but again, it's been over two weeks and I still, the, the deferment that we were going to do for the project to get the map recorded, I still haven't seen anything. Railroad Business Park, we've, it is, Chris will tell you guys, I'm sure in closed session, that the city is waiting on me for my traffic study, because we've been making some changes to it, but the initial study was supposed to be done at the end of, end of May, at the end of May, it's fully paid for, the developer fully paid for, it's still not done. I had to get my lawyer involved, just to get a, just to get a progress print of where the documents stayed, or where it, where it was the day that I requested it. It took me almost a month, and I had to get, I had to pay my attorney to get a copy of it. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
For those that didn't know, yeah, John O'Connor has been terminated from the city. And the thing is, is that I met with John when he first came on board, he's a very personable person, and had great ideas, very open to everything, recognized all, you know, that needs to be done in the way of economic development. He expressed to me he, he was overwhelmed with a stack of permits that could not get, you know, processed and pushed through, and with only two people at his disposal to help him to get that done. I'm, I'm disappointed in the fact that, you know, Chris is the guy that is the guy in charge of these, he's the manager. I have heard a lot of rumors since I found out about his termination, and the thing of it is, is this, you know, somebody like that, you know, who had the great ideas, who had the fire in the belly and ready to go, to be gone this quickly is, to me, inexcusable. Managers manage, and that's what we need. We, Chris, you, I feel though that that, you dropped the ball on that one, if, if that's the case, then prove me wrong, but the fact is, is that, you know, now we're right back to square one again, to go and get another economic development guy, and hopefully somebody that, you know, is going to live up to the, you know, expectations. But the thing of it is, is this, in the official statement that came out of the city, I read on there that he has departed. I thought he died. Yeah, this is, this is insane. The guy was here for like 70 days, and we're going to pay him for four months severance. That's my understanding, that's the way I read his contract. That's, that's just insane money, and, you know, my other concern is, is that there was some union influence of some sort that pushed him out the door. I don't know if that, how true that is, or if it isn't, but that's not how it works. And if that is the case, then shame on management for not intervening and saying, "Look, let's work through this, let's sit down, let's talk about your problems and go through it." This, the economic development is extremely important for, for Atwater. Coffee places, hamburger joints, whatever, these small-time things that are going on here is not what's going to make this city run. You've got to know that, and our public safety evaluation tonight only shows that.
Keith?
Most of the stuff I brought up earlier, and I, so I won't bore you and bring it up again, but I, I quoted these resolutions regarding Station 42. Unfortunately, I bought a house where I did, where I got to pay a CFD, now this year, over $1,000. We paid for this firehouse to be, for Police and Fire, we are no longer getting that. I supplied the city manager with all the resolutions, and so I felt that at least police should go in there right away, because that's what we're paying for. And I get, I'm doing more research on this. This was sent to the city manager and the police chief on August 6th, and it's still not resolved. Just, it's not fair to the people in District 4 who had to pay all this stuff, just because of where they live. So, you know, that's my take of what I feel. I know he's trying to do what he's doing, but it's just not right. He needs to start looking after the people of Atwater, not just the city.
I'm sorry, I wasn't going to speak on this, but in HR, human resources, if you have an employee that maybe is not performing to your liking, you sit down, you have a verbal discussion with them, that's number one. And if he's still, he or she is still not doing it, then you have, you write him up, that's number two. And then, still is not performing, then you terminate him, or, or you send him to. I mean, that's, all the years that I've been involved with employment, it's one, two, three, it's not, you're fired. You know, so, it's kind of strange to me, this costs, that's a lot of money, again, so it was just something I was thinking about just now, sitting there. Number one, verbal, number two, write up, number three, termination.
Alright, anybody else?
Sean Connor, Drakeley. Just to recap on some of the sentiment, right, obviously the cost of terminating John O'Connor, but more than anything, it's the momentum that I hope we don't lose. I urge City Council, Chris, everybody, to really keep your foot on the gas pedal here, because we were making some headway on these permits, and it would be a big shame if we got backlogged again because of this. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody else coming forward, I'm now closing public comment, and we are going to recess to Conference Room A, and we'll come back.